Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. Really loud.
Practice on that one.
It's mine, too. It's not yours. Um, we have some amendments to the agenda. But, oh, oh, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. We had stopped that when we started doing Zoom. And I'd like to bring it back. So we're gonna add that. You can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now we move on to the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda with the addition of new business subcode section B mods drywall bid for review.
Seconded.
Go ahead and vote. Oh, we, oh, we can, okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. And then our second part is presentations, proclamations, and visitors. We'll do oath of offices. I'm gonna move over here for that.
In front of the dais?
In front of the dais? Okay. That way I don't have to move all this stuff around. Okay, so Derek, come forward, please. So it turns out that you cannot swarm me into office. It has to be wrong.
That's fine.
But we are, we have some things for you.
Oh, great.
So there is a medieval tradition that is meant to confer trust and honor. It grows from a time when cities were walled and whose gates were guarded during the day and locked at night. Keys were entrusted to a select few. The key symbolized the freedom of the recipient to enter and leave the city at will. As a trusted friend of the city and its residents. It is with great honor that I present to you, Derek Clevenger, a key to the city of Amsoil, in the form of a tie pin for your service to our town and helping keep Amsoil great. There's more. There's more. Well, first, you get to have your.
Oh, yeah.
You get to keep your dais. And your name tag. And then.
So one of the other traditions that we have here at the city, whenever we have a transition, we'd like to come up with a little personal gift to give so that you think about your city family when you're off on your next adventure. And we always try to take that and make that gift have some use or thought to that particular individual. And so for us, we were trying to think of what, what would the mayor, knowing the mayor, like or be able to use? And originally, I thought a big knife. But then I didn't want to wield a big knife in the city hall. So we did end up getting you a nice pocket knife, and we hope that you use that and it becomes something that you, every time you do, you think about us. Yes, do not, do not put it in the holster backwards because it will, it will cut you. It's very sharp.
No, go ahead.
And just for your years of service, and I know you're not much for displaying mementos or awards, but for your years of service, we just couldn't let you get out of here without presenting you something from not just the city, but the citizens in the city for all your contributions and hard work over the last four years. And we hope that you will display this proudly because we're very proud of the work that you've done.
Yeah, we said this all day. I'm not really one for speeches, but I did write a couple of things down. I've never been more excited to be out of a job. I can say that. Serving as, as Amsoil's mayor has been one of the biggest honors of my life. But it's also been the single biggest cause of headaches. If you would have told someone 10 years ago that Amsoil would go from probably their biggest foul-mouthed, beer-swilling, tattooed mayor to the first female mayor and second female, first mayor, as a person of color. I think a lot of people would have thought that you were crazy for even thinking that because we were so kind of the town from Footloose. There he is. But nothing that we've accomplished these past few years could have been done without, obviously, the counsel, everybody involved. Ron being our sometimes robotic, but subject matter expert. I would have failed at this job miserably without Ron. Colleen, who's like mom to the city and works way too much. Steve, who's just kind of the cranky grandpa who falls asleep on Zoom calls. But also a community that has supported everything that we've tried to accomplish here in town. So a big thank you to everybody. Prior to being there, I was someone who was not very involved and really was kind of, kind of a recluse. I didn't have much of a social media presence or anything like that. And I've had a lot of people ask me how I would go from that to this. And I question anybody who wouldn't. I firmly believe that if you have the ability to do something good for someone else and it's not gonna hurt you to do whatever that thing is, you have an obligation to do it. And I hope that the council remembers that and carries that thought process forward. And then, as I've said repeatedly during my time here, you know, we are elected not to represent our own values, our own ideologies, or our own, you know, political aspirations. We're elected to represent the community, the community's goals, the community's aspirations. So always remember that. It's not about what we want. It's about what the community wants. I think we all know that the longer you all let me talk, the greater the risk is that I start accidentally swearing. So I will end it all by saying thank you, Amsoil. Thank you, Nico, for the beer. I'll still be around. I'm still gonna come to meetings and heckle all of you because now I can.
All right, Angie, you have to come back because our first official act will be to swear on our new mayor. So go ahead and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Angelica Natalia Sehawatchoa.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Oregon.
Of the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Amsoil.
Of the city of Amsoil.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of mayor.
Discharge the duty of mayor.
In the city of Amsoil.
In the city of Amsoil.
According to the laws.
According to the laws.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
Congratulations. All right. So we have two council members that are getting sworn in. And I'll do those individually. Nico, would you like to be first? All right, sir. If you raise your right hand, there we go, and repeat after me. I state your name.
Yu Casares.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Oregon.
Of the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Amsoil.
Of the city of Amsoil.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of city councillor.
Discharge the duties of city councillor.
In the city of Amsoil.
In the city of Amsoil.
According to the laws.
According to the laws.
And the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right, our next council member, Delacini. Great, go ahead and repeat after me, Della. I state your name.
I, Delacini.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Amsoil.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Amsoil.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of city councillor.
Discharge the duties of city councillor.
In the city of Amsoil.
In the city of Amsoil.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
But we have a pretty short agenda today. If you, for those that are present, that are guests, if you guys want to stay, that's great. We're gonna have pie afterwards. If not, you're welcome to enjoy your evening, but we hope that you stay. It's, Ron said it's National Pie Day. So. Against ordinance. All right, so we're gonna move on to appointment of vacant council positions. Right now, we have one position open that's been vacated, and that's to finish Councilor Echolstone's two-year remaining. And we have three applicants, and those should have been in your packets. So we can appoint that. We cannot appoint the other one until officially it is vacated, and we can't do that until tomorrow. So do you guys have any, I don't know how you guys wanna do the appointment to someone. Did you guys have a chance to review the applications? If there's, you guys want to discuss it, it's up to us how we want to do it.
I'd like to nominate Katie. Katie Wallace, if possible.
For those two-year position? Is that, is that your motion? You want to make a motion to nominate?
I'd like to nominate Katie if I can.
Is there a second?
Aye. All right, second.
Do we want to talk about it, or do you guys just want to vote on it?
Oh, we're just doing the appointment for.
For the two-year. Yes.
I would like to second.
Is Katie here tonight? Okay.
I would like to second that.
We can go ahead and vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Katie Wallace, are we going to swear her in tonight?
Yes, this is a vacant position. We can swear Katie Anne, and she can come up and sit at the dais with the rest of the council and continue the meeting.
Katie, would you please come forward?
And then are we just gonna probably wait till next meeting to appoint the next one?
Yeah, we have to.
We have to actually.
Yeah, so we have two other applicants. So tomorrow, we, I mean, we have to announce that it's officially vacant, and we can't do that until tomorrow. Is that correct, how the charter works?
No, actually, council has broad discretion in appointing vacancies. Officially, we can't declare it vacant until tomorrow, but we have been accepting applications since September. And you have three viable applications. And so council can draw from those applications. You could start the process all over again. It's really up to you. I do think you've got three great candidates. And if you, if you have reviewed those and there was somebody else that you struggled with choosing, you could indicate to that person your intent to appoint them, but it would be at the next meeting. If you wanted to do that, council can discuss it. You can wait and draw from those two applicants, and maybe you'll receive some others. It's really a broad discretion in your point.
Be able to appoint tonight.
You, you can't appoint tonight, but you could indicate we'll appoint this person. It'll just be at the next meeting.
That if possible. I mean, up to council, but yeah.
So, oh.
Let's swear Katie Anne, and she can partake in the conversation. All right. You just never know what's gonna happen at the council meeting. All right, raise your right hand. And just repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Katie Wallace.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
I will support the Constitution and laws.
The United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and the ordinances.
Of the city of Amsoil.
Of the city of Amsoil.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of city councillor.
Discharge the duties of city councillor.
In and for the city of Amsoil.
In and for the city of Amsoil.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
Congratulations. You can go over to wherever you're, the seat, the seat.
So if you guys, we have two other applicants left. If you guys want to voice your intent to nominate for that position, when it becomes vacant, now would be the time.
I would like to nominate Douglas Cox.
Second.
We're gonna, we're gonna vote on it. No.
Okay.
That to nominate, did you want, did you have, did you want to nominate the other one, or? Okay.
I just thought we were gonna discuss it.
Okay.
All right.
We can.
Matter. I just thought we were discussing it and then just having a consensus. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Well, after looking at Douglas Cox's application, I feel like he's probably well suited for the position.
One is considering that Amy served on the budget committee for years and.
Well, so. No, and I'm, I'm not discrediting Amy at all.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that they both have different benefits and things that they have done, so.
I think I really appreciate. First of all, I just want to thank everybody for applying because it's not a fun or sexy job necessarily to be a city councillor, and it takes someone who's truly passionate, wants to make a difference, to do it. I really am supportive of Doc, of Doug Cox, though, because I really appreciate his, not only his background in law enforcement, but just the administrative background as far as budgeting goes, as well as his involvement with mental health and drug addiction and the work he does. I think it'll be valuable, too, I think, you know, not only just, you know, being a councillor, but I think just as far as policy goes, it'd really give us a nice insight to how we carry ourselves forward. So it's kind of why I'm supporting him.
So we'll vote on that on the next meeting, correct, Ron?
That's right.
Okay.
The action will be vacate the position and you're welcome to go to the media.
Okay. The next item is appointment of new council president. I have ended my one-year term. So the position is now open. If you guys want to nominate somebody on the council or show your intent to be council president, now would be the time.
I have mentioned to Angie that I am available to go with her to different things and support this where some of you work and I don't any longer, so. I am willing to do that.
Any else? Ron, do we need a motion, or we do, do we just appoint?
Yeah, somebody would nominate. There would be a second. Make sure the can, the nominee is willing to accept the appointment and then vote.
Okay.
I move to nominate Delacini as council president.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Della, do you intend to keep the nomination? Accept it? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Dennis Delacini is our council president for the next year. Appointment of planning commissioners. So we have two vacancies open on the planning commission, and we had two applicants. Is that correct, Ron?
Yes, both applicants are current members of the planning commission. They signed up for reappointment. It's been our tradition that we do open open the positions up. We did that. We advertised them. We did not receive any additional applicants. Both members are in good standing and have done a great job for the city.
So we can just reappoint them?
Yes.
There are two vacancies.
We have to nominate them.
Yes.
I move to appoint, to reappoint Chris Chitka, as well as Jennifer Bolin, to our vacant planning commission seats.
Second.
All those in favor, vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
And just for the viewers' information, we're gonna have a couple of positions open up on the budget committee because we've appointed two budget members, or we will have appointed two budget members. So we'll have a couple of open budget committee positions. We'll put those out in this month's newsletter and then bring that back for a February action item.
Okay.
Thank you, Ron.
All right, so moving on, public comment. Do we have any public comments? No public comment. Consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Number four, public hearings. We have no public hearings. Number five, old business, no old business. Six, new business. Been action. Surplus Public Works Equipment. Ron, your report?
Yeah, so the, the, the city has a number of pieces of outdated equipment that's just kind of sat around rusting in the weather. And one of the things we've asked Public Works to do in anticipation to some of our capital projects is to kind of clean up a little bit. One of the mechanisms for us to eliminate any public property is to send it to the state surplus to be surplused out. And that's what the recommendation is. Most of the equipment that's on this list here, there's a list before council, has little value. And, you know, we have a couple of other options where we can advertise it and take sealed bids. It's very time-consuming. And, and those folks that might be interested could do the same thing through surplus. We're just basically giving them a percentage of the proceeds to go through the administrative process of surplusing out the equipment. I'm not sure if most of it is functional. Most of the equipment that's on this list, it's been building up for a period of time. And so we just asked council to go ahead and approve the action to surplus this property through the surplus agreement. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? And so we just need a motion?
I move to surplus the Public Works equipment as recommended by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Next item, approval of the five-star drywall proposal for mods.
Yeah, just a little background. When we started this project for mods, it was really our intent at that moment to create the building that we actually have there today, but it was gonna be a shell, and then we were gonna come back and revisit it for other stages. And as we got into the project, we were issued a permit from Marion County for that plan. But then, as we got into the project, they re-identified the building to be more of a commercial building, and that required insulation, drywall, and some modifications to our plan. And so we kind of ran with that. And we did, council did previously approve a contract to do electrical work and insulation. And now we're at the stage for drywall. And there's enough money in our, our capital line item out of the general fund to finish this project off. And if, if you think that this is a worthwhile effort on our part, we'd like to go ahead and finish the inside walls of that facility. If we approve this contract, they'll, they'll have it done in, in the next couple of months. So it'll be well ready to go for our, our summer market season.
Good.
Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the mods drywall project as presented by staff.
Again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Moving on to city administrator report.
Yeah, I don't really have a whole lot in my report tonight, other than to let you know that the police report is in your packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions related to that. Our chief is doing a great job fitting into the new role, and I'm, I'm pretty pleased about where our department's headed. We're actively recruiting for a couple of our open positions, and we've got a great pool of candidates to choose from. So things are looking really good there. Public Works, we're dealing with, there's information in, in Steve's written report. We're just dealing with all the Public Works things that occur daily in the city, but nothing that we can't manage. On top of that, we're still dealing with a lot of capital projects. We're almost ready to go out to bid for our water reservoir project, which will also include two new wells, and that work has been happening behind the scenes, and that'll be coming to council. Probably the first meeting in February-ish, sometime in February-ish for projects. I'm really excited about that. And then to let council know, as following council's directions, even though we've just kind of had a change, I did put in a capital request before session started for our wastewater sewer system. And we met with some representatives kind of between the election and now discussed some of the things they wanted to see in a request. And we went ahead and submitted our request along those lines, which is not a full project request. They wanted to see, you know, the city take on some of the responsibility if it was funded. Uh, you know, the city take on some of the responsibility if it was funded. So they didn't want to fund a full request. And we did distribute that to our representatives. Um, I do have some appointments just to provide technical information because I obviously can't lobby on behalf of the city. And I know our elected officials uh, are um. And all of you may have appointments that I'm not even aware of, but I know of some appointments that Angie has set up. Uh, to also work on behalf of the city in that regard. Um, w- we continue to work on, on this uh, infrastructure funding for this wastewater system. It's, it's a big project for us and. Uh, you know, we're, we're just trying to buy down as much of that debt as we can before. Um, you know, additional debt might get thrown on ratepayers. So we continue to do that. I'm happy to answer any questions. I did uh, work on uh, grant resources today for quite a little bit. And so, you know, we're looking, we're looking under the rocks and trying to find out what's out there. And other than that, um, we've concluded lots of our projects. As you guys know, our sign project is up and running. Um. Uh, and our memorial project was unveiled last month and pretty excited. We're really. Closing the loop on a lot of those and I'm excited to get together with council to retreat and brainstorm some additional projects for next year.
Um, mayor, is that, that's it? Okay, so we move on to mayor and councillor reports. Anything from you guys?
I'm just going to mention uh, that um, I'll be available uh, on the uh, twenty-fifth to uh, go to city day at the Capitol and. And I will probably have some time to huddle kind of beforehand as far as what our strategy is to kind of, you know, uh. Politely uh, push our uh, representatives. Um. And I'm not sure if Ron had gotten an email. I got a random email because I, of course, um. You know, s- supported Tina Kotek and so uh, there was an email that went out uh, just saying that she was going to go tour. I guess the state and if you wanted to suggest a stopping point in any of. The county she was stopping in, I went ahead and just threw Almsville's name in there. Um, I don't know if we'll be a part of it, you know, when they, she comes to Marion County, but. I figured regardless of partisan lines and everything, I think whatever help we can get is appreciated, so. Want to mention that, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm also signed up for the, the city day at the Capitol on the twenty-fifth. I would love all you guys to come. Um, and lobbying on behalf of that request that we put in. And then that's it. I think the next item, if anyone else doesn't have any thing to add. Anything for good of the order? I will be out of town uh, this next week. Um, and through the sixteenth. So um, I will be available by phone, be at a state. Next item, correspondences. Do we have any? None. And I believe that's it, guys, for the first meeting of the year. There's nothing else. We can adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-seven PM.